Last chance, last opportunity. Okay, my computer says seven o'clock. I will call the January the 12th, 2016 Board of Supervisors meeting in order. This is the reorganization meeting and as we do each year, we have all the members present to welcome Mr. Lester taking Mr. Hall's place. We encourage you to have four years in glass. Next item of business and the first item is invocation. I'd like to see Mr. Lindemay. So, Dr. Housman, we've all seen. Your lead, your lead, and your lead, and appreciate it.
Okay. Let's pray. Dear fathers, we come together on this cold and snowy night. We do appreciate all the things that you have provided for us. And fathers, we go about this meeting tonight, we pray that we will indeed do what will honor you and what will best serve the citizens of the county. Father, let us manage the resources that we have in a wise and discerning fashion. And again, everything that we do, let us do with an air of cooperation and commitment to the people that we serve. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just have a little more question. I was wondering if on our county website...
Tonight, because we're electing a new chairman, Citizens' time is after election of the chair. So, we'll get to you in just a moment. But welcome, and I'm glad you're eager to get up here. First order of business is election of a chair for 2016. I would open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Gary Housman.
We have a nomination for Mr. Housman. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Dalton, I'd like to nominate Mr. Reeves.
We have a nomination for Dr. Gary Housman and Mr. Tim Reeves. Would we have any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to close the nominations?
So move.
All those in favor of closing nominations, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. We'll take the nominations in order. Mr. County Attorney, correct me if I get out of order here, but the first person as nominated that receives the majority vote of the Board of Supervisors will be declared first. Mr. Housman was nominated first. If he receives four votes, that will end the voting for chair of the Board of Supervisors.
That's right, yes.
Okay.
I nodded my head, I apologize.
Okay. Well, Mr. Dr. Housman is the first person that was nominated. We'll start with Mr. Horny.
Aye.
No.
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 Aye. Okay, that was three to four. That's not a majority. The next nomination was Mr. Tim Reeves. We'll start at the same corner. Mr. Horny.
No.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Mr. Reeves is by a margin of four to three is the 2016 Chairman of the Withfield Board of Supervisors. Just a second, Mr. Reeves.
Pass it or are you gonna carry it?
I'll just carry it because I'll drop it for something. Maybe I should, thanks.
Congratulations, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you. Thanks to the board. We'll move on with the agenda. I'll carry on with the agenda. Next item on the agenda is election of the Vice Chairman for 2016. I'll open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Hale.
Okay, we have a nomination for Mr. Hale as Vice Chairman. Any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Horny.
Okay, we have a nomination. Floor for Mr. Horny is Vice Chairman. Any other nominations?
Can I step down instead of accepting the nomination?
Yes, Mr. Horny.
Decline the nomination.
Decline the nomination.
I appreciate it, but I've got some things going on in my life right now and I just don't think this is the right year for me to do it.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Horny has declined the nomination. Any more nominations? I entertain a motion to close nominations.
I make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, close nominations. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
You can try it again.
I'll leave it to acclamation. Mr. Hale, congratulations for Vice Chairman. Relation and naming of pro Tim. I'd like to name Mr. Willis as pro Tim in the absence of me or Mr. Hale to be served over the meetings. And being that's completed, now we'll move into Citizens' time. Ms. Myers.
Yeah, just quickly. The Withfield Farmers Market is really, really a good thing and I was wondering if the, on the county website, we could just have a little space someplace and that could link it so people could get there because people, there's a lot of people that don't do Facebook and can't find information for the farmer's market. So, it would be helpful if it was on the county website. So, could that be taken into consideration?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that all?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Myers was the only one that signed up for Citizens' time. Would anyone else would like to address the board at this time? Here or none, I'll close Citizens' time. Okay, we have the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of December the 22nd, 2015. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I would make a motion to approve minutes.
I have a second.
Say.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. And I'll open the floor if there are any corrections or changes need to be made to the minutes. Here or none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes out. Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to pay the invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to pay the invoices. Take it that everybody's looked through them. Is any invoice that any board member would like to question? Here or none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horny?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes out. All business. Rules of procedure for 2016. Yeah, they were in your board packages. Same rules of procedure that we adopted in 2015. Entertain a motion that we adopt the rules of procedure for 2016.
I would so move.
I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the rules of procedure for 2016. I'll open the floor for any discussion or any changes. Here or none, I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Housman?
Aye.
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 And the Chair votes out. 2016 budget calendar. Mr. Dalton, I don't know where I've seen the budget calendar. Yes, it is.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Is there any variance from what we did last year?
Sir?
Is there any variance from what we did last year?
Actually, it's not. Things go inside. That leap year, the calendar slips a bit. Most critical portion is for everybody to schedule is the week of March 28th, when everybody is scheduled to come in to do the presentation. Mr. Reeves is already grimacing because he's gonna be on the other country or somewhere.
Well, I'll be across the country that week. Is it the 29th, 28th of Monday?
Twenty-eighth is...
I may be back.
Easter is the day before.
Or I may be coming back that day. So, we'll just leave it as it is. I may have to miss the first day. Any other questions or changes or conflicts that any board member think they might have?
The January 26th, the initial budget parameters.
Okay, you won't be here.
I won't be here for that.
Okay. Do we need to change it?
It doesn't hurt.
That's the afternoon of our normal day meeting.
The way...
You can move it. The reason we put there is morning time, we'll have a normal board meeting in the afternoon. We come back and talk about the budget. But, that's flexible. There's another day that's...
What's the first meeting is February 9th?
February 9th.
Would it hinder if we waited and done it then?
We'll do it prior to the meeting.
Meeting on February 9th. Let's change it and... What happened? Meet at four P.M.?
At five.
Okay.
Can you make it 5:30?
5:30.
Yeah, I'm back to driving the bus.
Okay.
The 26th would've worked good for me because I'm off all day.
So, that'd be budget parameter meeting, parameter and goal.
If you want to set, if we need it, well, you can set it at five and I mean, I may be a few minutes late, but I can be here.
Do we need the extra time?
Well, when we have that meeting, we go around these board members, addresses the goals he'd like for the county to have in the budget that we're gonna start developing. Usually, sometimes we discuss the school board budget, you know, what they're thinking about. So, usually takes a little bit of time to run through that.
Let's start at five. Okay, any other conflicts? Entertain a motion to approve the 26th date budget calendar. As amended.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second. I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here or none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Mr. Dalton, anything under other?
No.
Okay, we'll move right on into new business, 2016 appointments. Okay, the first appointment is Alcohol Safety Action Program, which is VASAP. It's a four-year term. It ended on 12/31st. I've been serving on that for the past four years and I'll entertain a motion. I'm willing to continue serving, but I'll open the floor for nominations.
I make the motion, you stay on there.
I have a second.
Daggit.
Okay, motion second to reappoint me. Any other nominations? Here or none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Appalachian Regional Exposition Center Authority. This is, I know we talked, I've called some people and I will give a list of the people that we have contacted. Jimmy Hufford.
Have we, Mr. Chairman, have we advertised for applications for people who are interested?
I think we.
Specifically for that, for that exposition center, no, but for general interest in committees and stuff for the county we have.
Well, listen to the list that, that we put together and we may have to wait on the second one until the second meeting in a month. It's Jimmy Hufford, Artie Hall, Matthew Miller.
I, I just, the only reason I'm asking, I don't know where the names came from.
Well, three of them, two of them come from the A A E C board. Mark Munsey and Buddy Johnston. And Matthew Miller was the extension agent. Matthew Miller, them three. Then I come up, I called Mr. Hufford and asked him if he would be willing to serve.
I guess what I'm asking is, you know, we don't have it in the, you know, in the ordinance, you know, any specific person or, or position. Are we gonna do, are we gonna do interviews? I mean, for, for other boards, you know, we set up interviews, we talk to people, we, you know, listen to their qualifications, ask them some questions and stuff and this is a, this is a pretty big authority to, you know, to have. I mean, I'm just asking, are we doing anything like that or are we not? Are we just naming people?
The board's pleasure, whatever the board wants to do as far as, I mean, we've not interviewed for all of them. I mean, we have for the fire and rescue boards. I don't know if we've interviewed for the planning commission. I don't think we have.
Well, the planning commission is...
J I D, I mean, the J I D A. And we've reappointed some on that.
And you don't for the college, college board.
But, okay, but those are not ones that we are, so we're responsible for naming, you know, people for.
I haven't seen but one application for them. Is there more?
I haven't seen.
I've answered that.
I have at least one, there may have been two.
Did I ask you at one time to put it out? I thought I did.
I think it's widely known throughout the community that this is happening. It's been talked about in several versions of the paper and it's been talked about on the radio. So, there's no mystery that it's happening. We discussed it some time ago, maybe three meetings ago. I asked that the whole board act on these things instead of individual appointments by district, if you remember, because I think this needs full board support and not they appointed by district.
Well, and I, I know that I asked that because there were seven, you know, there were seven people on it. So, I assumed that it, at that, that it was, you know, an appointment just as it is with the, with the planning commission. All I'm asking is that, you know, your, your name is some names. I, I have no idea who was, who was applied, who was being asked, what the, what the situation is and this is gonna be a big, it's gonna have a big impact on the, on the county, on, on tax revenue and everything else. And I, I think we need to, need to be very aware of everybody of, you know, of, you know, who is being considered for an appointment.
Let's be considerate and let the Chairman finish the list and then if this is a delay, will the delay hurt us moving forward? We're compact in time. The money's there. The thought process is there to build a ag center. Another two-week delay to appoint the board, I thought we were gonna get them in position to work by the first February. And if this is a delay, let's call it a delay and settle it.
Well, my recollection of what happened to last quarter meeting and the authority was approved. That meeting, I asked you to change the motion to delay. We didn't have any names read and the ordinance required seven names.
Right.
And debate, if I rec, I may be wrong, yes, but I think what y'all agreed to pass the ordinance on was that you'd have the names in place by February the 1st. Martha, we, two applications is what we had. Mr. Hall is one of them.
Joe is our next one.
Doug Hughes.
Yeah, that's the one I see, Doug Hughes.
These are people with skill sets and have the passion to work and make this thing a success and I'm for doing it anyway, Mr. Housman, that...
But when I'm, I guess, Mr. Hale, what I'm saying is that you are, you know, of course, I know, you know, Mr. Hufford, but, you know, Mr. Hughes, I, I don't know, you know, Mr. Hughes.
Well, I drink Mr. Hufford's milk, but I don't know him.
Well, then, then you should...
So, do you have to know each of the seven or do I have to know each of the seven?
I would think that if, if you're gonna vote on it, that you would know something about each person that, that's gonna go on the, on the board. I mean, I would like to, but again, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's a pleasure of the board if, I mean, if we name them, you know, tonight, that's, I, I'm just saying that I think that it's, it's an important authority. It's gonna be, have a big impact on the county and we, I feel that we should know, you know, who, who's applying and, you know, who we're considering. That's, that's me. I'm, so that's, you know, you know, what I have.
The two out that we've talked about, the extension agent, that he being on, on the board, on the board, I think that's been well discussed in previous meetings. And the two from the fundraising group, we, that, we asked them in the meeting with me and Joe and Gene, who to, what to off the, that committee that they wanted to have appointed to the board. And the other four, I talked to Mr. Hall and asked him and I talked to Mr. Hufford and I think Joe and Cory has talked to Doug Hughes. So, them, them are the six. I had tried to get ahold of Bruce Stevens and couldn't. I haven't received a call back from him. And that appointment, the seventh one, may have to be later. But them's the six names that we're looking at right now. And, and I will leave it up to the board and I'll entertain a motion either proceed or to table the motion until the January day, day meeting.
There really hasn't been a motion, I don't think, Captain.
No.
Yeah. So, but I guess you could entertain a motion to table the issue.
Yeah.
For appointments until the next board meeting.
Who was, who was the two you had off the A A E C? Mark Munsey and Buddy.
How about going over the list again and formally, for the record, give the names and their affiliation to county events and/or agriculture industry.
Resting a lot for me, Joe. But I, I'll go, I'll do the best I can. Mark Munsey, former board member. May, Mr. Dalton, you could give a little bit of background of his...
Mr. Munsey, longtime accountant and CFO of Pendleton Construction. Came on the Board of Supervisors in the early 90s. Spent two terms on the Board of Supervisors. A very conservative type of person. He had the driving forces on the Board of Supervisors, working in the county to set aside funds for sewer system in the eastern end of the county. Personally, without making any difference, I know Mr. Munsey. Since about 1980, worked on different projects, cost estimating, billing, payments, et cetera, for various projects in my previous life. So, I have a, I know Mr. Munsey long history. Very ethical, conservative person, in my opinion.
Next one's Buddy Johnston. I know he, he farms, he raises registered Angus cattle.
I'm sorry, Tim, I didn't hear you. Who was it?
Buddy Johnston.
I guess he's in the west, west part of this county.
Yes. Do you know any more?
The thing I know about Buddy Johnston, I knew his dad a lot better, obviously, but Buddy, Buddy's the president of Southwest Angus Association. Also, something in the Farm Bureau. I don't know exactly why. But, longtime farmer, just out north of town. Family's been here for decades. His dad was a banker. He's been active in the agricultural community and the Angus Association as long as I've been, been doing it. What I know about Mr. Johnston?
Jane, you want to add anything? I know you're a member of the Farm Bureau with him.
He was president of Farm Bureau, I know that. And I mean, I've been on, I've been to meetings with him with the A A E C, but...
Okay. The next one's Matthew Miller, which he's a graduate from tech. Been a long time extension agent for, it's been 14 years. Here is, I don't know how long he's been in this county.
Matthew came through when we used to do student government day. He was one of the first kids that came through our student government day, participated in the county. Graduate of Virginia Tech, worked in Carroll County, was an extension agent for several years. Went to Smith County. Finally came open here in Withfield County. We wrote several letters to Board of Supervisors to encourage Virginia Tech to allow them to come home.
And I've worked with Matthew for several years, you know, as far as my farming operation and found out that he was a very reliable and... and found out that he was a very reliable and outstanding, very knowledgeable about a lot of things. And Artie Hall, I've known Artie for years, and we all, he sat on the board for four years, he's a graduate from, is he Emory Henry here? Yeah, I thought he's a graduate from Emory Henry. He's worked in the banking field for many years, he's a branch manager and regional manager at First Bank now. Married, three kids, a very good leader in, in the community. And the next one's Doug Hughes. I'll let you, you wanna talk about Mr. Hughes?
Doug's a known businessman in eastern end of the county, recently retired from that business, long established in the national Angus business, went to school here in the county and reading his resume, he showed herford cattle when he was in high school, and then become part of the onslaught of Anguses. All cows had to be Angus to be good beef, but he's been on the board of directors and an officer in the National Angus Association, which, in my opinion, gives those folks some knowledge in how to attract and bring national events here. And the whole compenium of who this board knows is very important to the success of the venture. It's, it's a regional concept, but it certainly, you have to have an outreach to national organizations to get the big active shows here. A hard worker and has passion to make it work.
Anything anybody else would like to add? If not, Jimmy Hubbard, dairy farmer, runs his own, runs a domestic business in the western end of the county, has his own milk product, Dutch's, that sells in Roy Tree and local grocery stores, and I don't know where else. Maybe you know where he's a graduate from?
He's a graduate of Virginia Tech.
Virginia Tech.
Jimmy and I started first grade together. I mean, I know, I know Jimmy well, he is, he is a successful farmer in the Roy Tree area, Jersey cattle. He and his brother John inherited the, you know, the dairy farm, and they've increased its capacity and quality, and it has won several national awards as well as state awards. Jimmy also was a longtime member of the Wood County Planning Commission.
So that's the, the six members.
Mr. Chairman, I had one person to contact me, I didn't realize that we were doing this tonight, but I will bring, you know, her name up, I mean, if we're, if we're bringing names up, and that was Kathy Dunkley Patterson. She, you know, she's, you know, an employee of, of the telephone company, she's retired, she's been very involved, you know, in, in athletics, is an avid golfer, and, you know, knows, you know, the, the athletic aspect of it. And so I would, I would put her name out there because I told her that, you know, that I would, when it, I, I told her I didn't know the procedure that we would use, but when it came up, I would, would enter her name. So, yeah, I, I'd like to do that.
Kathy Patterson.
Kathy Dunkley Patterson.
Kathy was a good business, providing person through United Telephone, embarked the Central League, retired.
I know Kathy.
Known her for a long time.
Long time.
Good person.
Okay, the, there are seven members. I'll entertain a motion to either table it until the next meeting or move forward with appointing these seven to the Appalachian Regional Exposition Authority.
Have you talked to the ones for the Expo Center, or for the A A C?
Yes. I talked to Mark today.
One, one concern is, you know, I, I thought that the Expo Center, my understanding was it was not just an ag Expo Center, that it was an Expo Center for, you know, for different events and, and all that stuff, you know, a lot of varied things, you know, were awfully heavy, you know, just in, in agriculture, you know, part of it. I'm, I mean, if, if these end up being the, you know, the people, we don't have really anybody that has, you know, event-type, you know, experiences.
I'd make a motion that we table this till at least our next meeting, and if anybody's got any other names, they can bring them up then, and we'll decide then. I mean, as far as getting the center underway, I mean, this group is in responsibility for getting the events and running it, right, not building it.
Well, you're exactly right, Gene. The other night, I attended, first time in a long time, at the last of the meeting, this group, and I talked to Mr. Farthing earlier today, this group is an operational group who will be leasing property from, that the county constructs and owns. Their job is to operate it as a recreational authority, a multi-venue type of events, not just agriculture, but a diverse type of, their job will be to pay the debt service, which is a huge responsibility. I explained it to a couple of the, or three of the potential candidates for this board last week. I'm not sure everybody understood what the authority's job is gonna be, because we're gonna enter a lease with them, that they've gotta make the debt service payments, operate the facility, and basically, they're on that board at the pleasure of this board, of how to go about it. The importance of the appointing of the board, besides of what we, the board did with the ordinance last time becoming effective, February the first, is, as we start forth, and the county constructs this, because the responsibility for the construction of the facility and the grading and everything is the board of supervisors, and the staff will do that as directed. But if we start next week, week after the, the authority to get into the flow of scheduling events, 2016 events are scheduled.
Right.
It's 2017, so they have to, in my viewpoint, commit themselves to having enough staff that they can get a fully every weekend event, starting from the day we close or construct this facility and turn the keys over to them, so that they can generate enough dollars to pay this debt service, so that it doesn't impact Wood County Board of Supervisors' budget. If you remember, a couple of months ago, I sent you a memo that says that it had to happen, or we, our budget is adversely affected for next year. The way we structured this loan is their first payment begins beyond just interest only, the first full payment of principal plus interest, which is around $30,000 a month, is December of 2017. So it's critical, in my opinion, that once this board's named, they have enough staff, or staff person, that they can line out events that, from, whether it's agriculture to a county fair, to, to a home show or a concert, that, to average $1,000 a day, profit, profit.
That's just to pay back?
That's just to pay.
Right.
The loan. They've gotta have pretty significant events, and the sooner they can get planning on that, the more successful they'll be. Because for a group of seven diverse people to come together and submit back a plan, because our lease agreement with them is gonna be pretty darn detailed, of how they gotta operate, and what they can do with the building, et cetera. I went through some figures with just one event with Mr. Farthing, because even with one event, you may be selling tickets for three days, but it, it ties up the facility for six days, because you gotta move it in and get it ready, et cetera, so. It's, it's a huge investment, a huge planning type of activity. The seven y'all point, my vision is, they'll be meaning more than you guys, because they've gotta come up with a plan of how to pay for this, and they've gotta understand that they've gotta pay for it and generate enough revenue to make it happen, because the current plan is, so it doesn't adversely affect the Wood County budget, is they generate those funds. I think I told this group of A E C, the fundraising group, the other night, they need $700,000 in the bank before we start.
The debt service is, what, 300 and?
About 360, 347s.
Okay, so, and that's for 20 years?
Yes.
So with $1,000 a day, every day, for 20 years?
So, I mean, it's, I think we've made that leap of good faith, we've borrowed the money and it's in the bank, and we got 5.8 million. But as I told the group the other night, is, we will not exceed that budget and come back and ask this board of supervisors for additional money unless they generate the money and give it to us. Whatever their vision is for this thing, we're gonna build it for 5.8 million dollars. And the other thing I told them is that through this lease, we've invested 1.3 million dollars, 35 acres is almost over a third of that property. Somehow, they have to pay us back for that, that portion of that land purchase. That's gotta be in that lease. Maybe we're overly aggressive, but I think I laid it out to the group, that group the other night, as plain as I could. And I don't think they understood the magnitude of, of what was going on, but I think at the end of the meeting, they did. But it, it is a huge endeavor. To be successful, they need as much time, we need as many good people on there that's willing to spend the time and effort to make it successful. And they're gonna have to have a, a staff member who refuses to fail.
I think you ought to clarify one thing, though, these are two different groups.
The A A C.
The authority has a job, and the fundraiser has a different job.
That's, that's exactly true, Joe, but three of those members are on both, so they, but that sort of ties it together so that they, they can't say blame it on somebody else.
Right.
But I guess now we gotta, for that explanation, I'm sorry for that long speech, but I think everybody has to understand where we're at. I gave the same speech to six people or seven people I don't work for the other night, and then I ran out the door.
Okay, Mr. Hornet's made a motion to table it, I'll entertain a second. I'll second.
Motion is second to table it, need discussion?
Mr. Hornet, would you entertain an amendment? That, that this will be settled, I won't be here next meeting, but one way or another, this needs to get done, we can't keep putting it off.
Well, that was what I was getting ready to, I just thought about that and was getting ready to say.
We'll add that to it, so we can.
That, that it will be settled at the next meeting, we will appoint at the next meeting.
Okay, one more, I'm gonna ask this question, is, okay, what, with these seven people that we've got named, what's gonna change between now and the next meeting? What are you wanting to find out?
Well, I mean, are the, is the application process closed?
Personally, I wanna talk to a few of them to.
Okay.
But I mean, that's just me.
I guess, Gary, we take applications all the time.
Yeah. Do any of them have planning background?
Mr. Hubbard does, he's on the planning commission for, for several years. He's a certified planner.
Yeah, Mr. Johnston has ran sales and things, Doug Hughes has ran sales, pretty significant sales, Buddy's sales will generate, how many people, eight or 900 down there?
Probably.
Lot of cattle moving in and out over a week's period. Mr. Muntz was advisor to the planning commission when he was on the Board of Supervisors, whether you counted his planning or not, when he worked for Pendleton, the laying out of jobs of when to get it done and things, I think has to count for something. If you can plan that, it's, it's a different kind of planning, it's a long-term planning, but I guarantee you, Mr. Hubbard knows where his milk sales are going when he produces finished Dutch's chocolate milk and cream milk, that he's got an order for it to be sold. So I think most of these people have the business sense and some other type of planning, Mr. Lester, abilities. Some of these people, I don't know them all as well as I should probably, but some of these people are pretty significant people and done well in business and stuff in, during their careers and lifetime.
One final question. If, if, if we do delay it, and if we get other applications, do we consider them or not, is it?
I think we'll have to consider everybody that's, that's put in for it. That if other people, if we, if we delay it until the, our next meeting, and we get more applications in, we'll have to look at each one of them.
Okay.
And it's a day meeting, and we'll have plenty of time to, to look at them and discuss them. Anything else?
Are you gonna accept his amendment, Mr. Hausman?
That, well, I think that it kind of forces us to, because we have to have them in place right now, according to the ordinance, February the first, it is unless we change the ordinance, and I don't think that that's gonna happen, so, yeah, I would accept the amendment.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Table till the, our next day meeting in January. As far as the, you know, our regular committee assignments, I'll have Martha to top it up, I don't think any of them will change. I don't think any of them will change.
That anybody, unless somebody wants to come off the committee, let me know. We will go through a few of them. Steve, what was the committee that you said that you was wanting to?
He's on the Chief Elected Official, which is the Workforce Investment Board.
Okay, we'll wait and appoint that at the next meeting, too. There's some here that's got to be appointed tonight. District 3, Governmental Cooperative, I've been the... I've served on that for the past four years. I'm willing to continue to serve, but I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint you.
I have a second. Any more nominations? And also, before we vote, Mr. Willis would be my alternate, if he will. Do you have any problems with that, Steve? Mr. Willis, okay. Any more nominations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Juvenile Detention Committee, I've been on that for the last four years. I'm willing to continue to serve on that committee, but I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any more nominations? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Juvenile Detention Committee, I've been on that for the last four years. I'm willing to continue to serve, but I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, is any other nominees, motions for nominating anybody else? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Juvenile Detention Committee, I've been on that for the last four years. I'm willing to continue to serve on that committee, but I'll open the floor for nominations.
Move the chief superintendent to deal with the criminal.
I have a second.
Second.
Any more nominations? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, I've served on that for the past two years. I'm willing to continue to serve, but I'll open the floor for nominations.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, is any other nominees, motions for nominating anybody else? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, Transportation Technical Committee, Stephen Burr has been serving on that for the past four years. I think he's willing to continue to serve. I entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Burr.
So moved.
I have a second.
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mountain Community Action Program, Mr. Burr and Ms. Reeves have served on that for the past year. It's your early appointment. I've talked to Ms. Reeves. Is Mr. Burr willing to continue to serve?
That is your own desire, I will, sir.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Joe.
I have a second. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New River Community Corrections Board, Mr. Willis has served on that for the past year.
I'll make a motion, we leave any moment.
Okay.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh...
Mr. Chairman, unless you're going to change any, can you just read off a bunch of those and adopt them as a block?
Chris King, New River Highlands Resource Conservation and Development Council, New River Highlands Resource, John Hufford, New River Valley Criminal Justice Service Board, Sheriff Keith Dunning and Tim Reeves, New River Valley Regional Jail Authority, Tim Reeves, New River Regional Jail Authority Alchemist, Saleel Dalton. Plan... Well, we'll do that for right now. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next time, it's the Planning Commission. I'll go by each board member.
It's just the ones that were elected.
Oh, okay. Mr. Lester?
Eric Crougy.
Okay, we have reappointed Eric Crougy. Mr. Horni?
I would reappoint David Midgus.
Okay. I'll reappoint Mr. Wilson, Doug Wilson, Mr. Hale.
Jeffrey Leinhardt.
Okay, Jeffrey Leinhardt. To have a motion to appoint those to the planning, those four to the Planning Commission.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I think that takes care of...
Mr. Chairman, if we could go back up to Mount Rogers Mental Health and Mental Retardation Board, Denise Greco, she went off...
Okay.
That's basically Mount Rogers CSB. But she went off this year, she was not eligible for reappointment. I spoke with Ms. Lisa Moore, the Director of Mount Rogers CSB, and asked her if for, you know, suggestion. I've talked to her, and they would like us to consider. Ms. Barbara Bartnik, she lives in the Roy Tree area. She moved here about five years ago from Ohio. She is, although she's not practicing right now, she is a psychiatric nurse. She is also a member of the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill. And while she was in Ohio, she served on a board that was more or less analogous to the community service boards that we have here in Virginia. So I would like to, you have to present her name as a nomination for, you know, the Mount Rogers Mental Health and Mental Retardation Board.
Okay, now I have a second.
Second.
Can you spell her last name, Gary?
Yes.
Yes, it's Barbara Bartnik, B-A-R-T-N-I-K, and I have her contact information.
Okay. Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I know I've skipped it here, is the DSS Board. I've served on it for the past two years. Am willing to continue serving on the DSS Board, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I think that takes care of the appointments that has to be made, isn't it, Mr. Dalton?
It is. The only one I'll make a note of, the Whiffle with bland chamber. Artie Hall's going to stay on that, and I talked to Jennifer about it. When they have an opening, we'll rotate in on that opening.
Okay. Okay, moving right along with the ACA agreement. Mr. Dalton, you want to explain?
That is our... The resolution the board needs to pass with our health care. It is due tomorrow. It was actually due last week, but what we need is a motion to accept that. It's actually an annual event now.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the ACA agreement.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
Second.
Motion, a second, to accept the ACA agreement. I'll do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye.
Next, this is information that we sent to the Department of Human Resource.
Yes.
In Virginia, and Virginia reports it to the federal government.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, Mount Rogers Health, Rescue, Local Government Agreement. You want to talk a little bit about that, Mr. Dalton?
I think the first paragraph of the agreement, and it's one we sign every year, which stipulates the amount of money that, of local dollars that are going to, that we pay to the Health Department. And this sort of lays out those dollars, and the board authorizes the county administrators to sign that agreement and enter into the agreement on an annual basis.
Okay, I entertain a motion. Second.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Horni?
Aye.
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 The chair votes aye. Next item on the agenda is Violence Against Women's Act grant. We have a grant of $24,919 federal funds and $9,896 in matching funds for a total worth of $34,815. I entertain a motion to accept the grant.
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Do a roll call vote. Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye. Mr. Dalton, anything else under other business?
I do a few, don't I?
Okay, Mr. McRoberts?
Boys, lead mines rescue squads having some difficulties now, and they need some help, and we need to help them or do what we need to do. We got two representatives here from down there, they can tell you just what they're looking at and what their facing.
Okay, y'all want to come up?
I'm James Armbrister, I'm the Chairman of the Board at the present time. I mean, I don't think it's any secret that we're in financial problems. We've had some problems this last fall. We've talked to Mr. Dalton, we've talked to Mr. Hausman, we've talked to Mr. McRoberts, Mr. Hale, about what's, problems we've had, and a whole lot of the problems we've had have to do with the maintenance of the vehicles that we've spent an exorbitant amount trying to keep these vehicles running, particularly one in particular, which we found out about an hour ago is down again, so. You know, we just, we need some help. You know, I'm kind of like in a court that stowed myself to mercy, the court, we need help, and we don't know what else to do. We think we've done everything that we know how to do, or know what to do, is to keep afloat, and we're just barely keeping our head above water. We're up until a while back, and I don't know, I can't even say that we're doing that now. We're actually in a hole that we need to get out of, and the thing that really put us in the hole mainly was the maintenance on the vehicles. And once that happened, we just can't, can't seem to climb out of it, so we're just asking for some help.
How much, how much money are we talking about?
Right at this moment, we're holding checks for probably around $14,000. To vendors for supplies, for maintenance of vehicles, for medical supplies, oxygen, you know, for the, you know, just all that.
14,670. 14,670, 19.
That's probably, that's about it exactly, I guess. Well, that's not counting what I got to the post office today, so.
And you have, you have creditors, they want their money.
Well, I'm sure. And it goes without saying, you know.
The wheels are at the door.
And we've tried, tried to pay what we could, as we could, but, you know, without jeopardizing payroll. You know, we, to take care of our citizens, we have to keep our people paid, or we're not going to have the medics to run the trucks. I mean, it's, and we've tried to make sure we made payroll before we paid anything else. And we've kind of picked and choose as we went along to what we could afford to pay and when we could afford to pay. And to be perfectly honest, we've tried to take care of our local vendors and people as we could, you know. The garages that fix these vehicles for us, the ones that we bought supplies from locally, different things like that, we've tried to take care of them where we could, but, you know, we order supplies from outfit in the Midwest, you know. We order medicines from nationwide medical supply places. You know, these people are, at some point, are going to say, no more, you know, we're going to be, that's where we're going to be, we're going to be running the truck with nothing to do anything with, if that's what we're going to do.
To all say, James here, years ago, the hospital, you could go switch out drug boxes, you could get nasal canyons of supplies, but now they don't do that no more. Anything we buy is what we have to use. And going back to the maintenance of the trucks, Mr. Grant has a total of everything we spent on each truck. This 6.0 we got now, one's down now, has a bag zoncely called Guy Roy Tree, it's got $800 fixed, his options were coming through the cab.
We can't, we can't operate.
That's more patient.
We can't, we can't operate ourselves with less patients.
And that truck's probably more $20,000, $2,000.
I know that, of course, you know, Mr. Armbrister and, you know, Mr. Ingo, Reverend Ingo was here, and Mr. Dalton, and I, maybe, you know, one of the things that we talked about was the possibility of a reserve fund for, you know, for emergency repairs. Not just, not just for, you know, for lead mines, but if, you know, if any, if any of the three squads had an emergency breakdown that they, that they couldn't afford, that that would be, you know, available to, to help. I, you know, I certainly don't have any, you know, any problem with that. I mean, that, because I know that when we, we talked, that was one of the biggest, you know, the biggest expenses, and I think that With County is facing sort of the same thing with, with some, you know, emergency, you know, emergency repairs. I don't know how much that would, you know, would, would help, but I...
At this point, most anything would help.
Have y'all sat down with your bookkeeper and looked at things?
Yes, sir.
What, what plan do you have to correct?
One thing we've done, I've got a letter here written down, I spoke to Mr. Gordon earlier about, we're going to send out a letter campaign, you know, for the community to ask for donations, whatever. We've got a fundraising event planned probably sometime in February to try to raise some money to put back in the, in the squad. We've actually hired a girl this week on a part-time basis to really start working the calls as far as the ones we can collect money from.
Correct.
From the enhanced company is the one we do our billing through. We've hired a girl that's kind of familiar with this thing, and she's actually going to start doing, trying to do a little better job of doing that. I mean, we've got a fellow doing it now, but he does that along with a lot of other things, and it's just hard for him to get everything done. and it's just hard for him to get everything done, so.
Another thing we're looking at, I've talked with several people out of Ramsey, if you ask County, they have a subscription program, subscription program. It goes to the household, and what it is, like each family will give $50. And what that states is, if, if we come to your house, what the insurance don't pay, they give us $50. That's way offset that people don't, that don't pay patients and stuff like that. And the guy from Ramsey explained to me, that's what their lifesaver is down there. I mean, our population's probably 10,000, probably 7,000 homes in our coverage area. If you get 2,500, if people do, that's 137,000 dollars. That's what buys their new trucks, their new cots, their mess, that's what keeps them afloat down there.
And that's, that's not prescribed, I mean, that's, that's a voluntary thing.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, right. So that, right.
$10 subscription is what they got.
Right.
They send a mail around to their home, they fill it out.
It's just like the, the wings thing with the, yeah, with the helicopter.
But that, that's, that's a down-the-road thing, you know, we're talking about help now, we need help now. But that's a, that's a long-range type plan we like to get into.
What's the, James, what's the difference in between what you're paying out and what you're billing? Do you, do you know that?
Lose $37 for every call. Is that what you, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, I mean-
If you look, look at the revenue-
Are you billing, are you billing all your calls?
Yeah, oh, yeah. The, well, let me give you an example, I, I looked at some of the stuff before I came up here, 'cause I figured this was a question that was gonna get asked.
Let's not medicate, it's a flat rate. Safety props and our calls are Medicaid Medicare, like, you get a flat rate from Obama, that's it.
In the month, this is the month of December, this, I guess it's probably pretty typical of a normal month. We ran 117 total calls for the month. Out of those, 61 of those were billable calls that we could actually send to the insurance or whoever, or send to somebody to bill, in other words, we picked up a patient, took him to the hospital. That's a billable call. So the difference between that was standby calls for fires or accidents, refusals, you know, go to somebody's house and they, I'm fine now, don't worry, you know.
That's ours, man.
So, so you're saying the 61 is actually where you transported somebody?
Right, yeah. And out of, and out of that 61, 20 of those were patient pay calls. They had no insurance, or no, so, you know.
Truck stops, grayhound bus terminal, we cover eight, well, six truck stops in our coverage area.
How many out of that?
20 of those were patient pay. So actually, out of 117 trips that we made, we could actually probably expect to get something out of 41 of them. So that's, you know. That's just like, so that's just the month of De, that's month of December, but I don't think it's any much different than any of the rest of them, that's pretty well average type thing, so. That's, that's what's killing us, is this, you know, a whole lot of that kind of stuff going on. And we, and we pick up people to truck stops, we pick them up at the bus stations, we pick them up off the interstates, you know.
That's our, that's our local call.
We run a lot of miles when we pick, when we run a call, you know, so.
The man that supposedly shot himself and fell off the bridge.
Well, we, there's-
How many, how many man hours you got in that?
Well, our, our payroll went from, what, 38 or 3900 one week to over 5,000 the next week, so right there's the-
That's what's important there. Now, what was your question?
I think I've been permitted to say about this one, boy. How many paid, how many paid staff and volunteers do you have now?
There's probably 10 paid, 37 volunteers.
Are you, are you just running the day crew paid, or day in, night out? Quite how you, you provide volunteers?
But see, we're so adverse there. We have like search and rescue teams, extracation teams, Swiftwater Rescue Team, stuff like that. They're, they're predominantly the volunteer side, and, I mean, we're, we're structured.
So you don't have any volunteers on any calls?
Four, 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 I know, they pull a call shift, they give their, well, 36 hours a night.
When I wrote this letter, I went to the list and looked, and we had 42 members, and 14 of those were paid people and 28 are volunteers, but, you know. A lot of the volunteers are not certified or qualified to run calls. They help with the flea markets, they help with-
Or drive or something.
You know, they, some, a lot of them are, you know, certified to drive, but supposedly, I don't think we're even, unless it's a second or third run call, we're not even supposed to have, unless we have a, an ALS person in the back and a BLS person in the front, which, you know, that's, that's the prob, that's the law.
For scheduling purposes, you have to have a EMT for the medic in the back, according to Mr. Ron King, which y'all know. If it's a second or third, fourth call, you can have ALS provider just to regular drive, but he has to document on his call shift when he sends to Richmond, that covers that some day, before he, he gets his red lights.
Which, and there again, that's a lot of what, what hurts us, you know, we just can't. It's hard to attract volunteers that wanna work a full-day job and then come and work all night beside of somebody who's getting paid. You know, it's just-
I mean, we're running our calls, we probably, not really missed calls, it's like when we had two or three things going on in Eastern Park County, we had to call additional resources to help us out, you know. I mean, as far as, we're doing our part as answering calls, we're only rescuing, the county's got boats, rescue, four-wheelers can do anything like that. I mean, we go anywhere the county wants us to go, and the sheriff's department tests to that. We're doing our job, we just need some help to get us out of this hole till we get this fundraising letter going and looking at this subscription program from our insurance companies.
And park it, ambulance, that's killing us. Once we get the new one that's coming, we're gonna park that thing and just use it under extreme emergencies, so.
It'll be here, no-
First September.
First September.
No, I wouldn't look at it, I wouldn't look at it last Thursday. It went to the decal station this morning, so I'm looking at Monday, Tuesday, next week. I looked at it, and according to our builder, we use the county, I got Jason Hughes, the county lead number, that knocks a big chunk off it, so. We've got corners on it, but we want to pay that in extra for, we'll play it tomorrow.
But then, then the guys building the truck are in financial, they're about to fold too?
No, he's doing good now, Rick, I mean, it's just a loan storage unit, I follow that, but-
I've been telling first September for months.
Well, my recommendation, just pass rules procedure, which means they really has to go through the administrative process before you take it on. I would ask that, Mr. Chairman, you set a fire and rescue squad meeting tomorrow afternoon, or as soon as possible that we can get all of them together and give them the authority to act upon this request.
Okay. 3 o'clock, Dr. Hausman, Mr. Hale?
We'll take a vote from the board to allow them to take the action necessary.
Okay. I entertain a motion that, from the board, to give the Fire and Rescue Committee authorization to take care of this and amend and appropriate.
We'll come back with, with that.
With that.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make a motion.
They have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Haus- 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon. James, can you and Sam be there?
I have to work a little more, James can be there, it's okay.
You can't be there.
I'll be driving a school bus.
Kick it up a little later, we could, I'd be out at 2:30, I mean, if that's okay.
What time can you make it?
4.
4? Yeah, if it, I've got a meeting at night, but it's, I mean, it wouldn't take too long, so if it's 4 o'clock time, I mean.
4 o'clock tomorrow afternoon.
Here?
Yes.
Thank you.
We, we really appreciate all of you, because I know, I know that you're a farmer, you run a store, you drive a scooter, but damn you were, volunteer all that time.
I don't get paid, I'm a volunteer.
I'm gonna fuss, though, he's gonna be here at 4 o'clock, I ain't even on my bus at 4 o'clock.
I'm not, I'm not a volunteer, I, I volunteer there.
I hear it all the time, Jim.
And we'll see y'all tomorrow at 4 o'clock.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, anything else come for the board before we go into closed session?
I had something, Billy's here, so he might be able to answer it or tell us if we need to do it. Something about the windows at the extension office. They need, we approved the windows, but we didn't approve the money?
Well, number one, that's my job, not Billy's.
Okay.
Okay, but we've got the money in account, we'll steal somewhere.
Okay, I was just told that they wasn't getting any windows anytime soon because we didn't have the money appropriated. So I didn't, I was under the impression that we had, as a board, had to vote to do it, but if you-
I would, I would tell you that you need to be talking to me instead of somebody else, then. How about that?
Well, I gotta talk to whoever talks to me. Sometimes it ain't very, ain't very many people that wanna talk to me.
Well, they need to be talking to the right person, too.
Okay. Mr. Horny, you get with Mr. Dalton, y'all can settle that.
We'll do it.
Now, I entertain a motion to go into closed session under section 2.2.
What's Stephen got?
Mr. Dalton, we didn't want to introduce, we have Darlene Lang, our new Director of Dispatch with us, and I just thought that she was here, I might introduce her to, to you all before y'all want to be closed session.
Okay.
I, I thought that's who it was, I started to call 911 just to see.
I know her, so, she knows me, so. And Chief Deputy, congratulations, and the major's been here. So, anything else?
Just wanted to bring that up while she was here.
Do you like to get up and give a speech?
I'm good.
Okay.
We'll give you a mic, and you can go outside and talk to us through the radio.
Thanks for coming aboard, and I know you'll do a good job, we expect a lot out of you. Okay, again, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session under Code of Virginia, section 2.2-3711A7, Consult with legal counsel regarding pending litigation, and section 2.2-3711A.5, Perspective Business or Industry.
So moved.
They have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session.
Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors, such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in this closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and considered by the With County Board of Supervisors.
They have a second on certifying the resolution?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, Dr. Hausman?
Aye.
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 On the chair votes, aye. Now, anything else, Mr. Hale, do you'd like to discuss at this time?
Don't get us started.
Mr. Dalton, anything else come for the board at this time? Hearing none, we are adjourned.